Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Maddy Germer, and I'm an undergraduate at Harvard College. And it's my honor today to be here to welcome you all to join our distinguished guests, Senator John McCain of Arizona and Republican presidential hopeful. The Institute of Politics was founded in 1966 as a living memorial to commemorate President Kennedy's life. And the Institute of Politics' mission has been, since then, and remains today, to inspire young people into careers in both government and public service. It seems fitting, then, that an individual such as John McCain should be speaking at this institution. Few people in American politics today truly understand the meaning of public service, and Senator McCain is one of them. Whether you're looking at his distinguished military career, his time as a prisoner of war in Vietnam, or his terms in both the House and the Senate, John McCain has given more to his nation than almost anybody alive. In turn, he has also inspired others to serve their country in similar ways. One way is that he has inspired me to form an organization here on campus, Harvard Students for McCain, to further his presidential bid. If, after hearing Senator McCain's remarks this afternoon, you agree with me that he would be the best person to lead our country into the next century, we'll have a table set up where you can sign up to join our organization. His life story, his commitment to the American public, and his ambitious political agenda are certainly to be respected. On behalf of the students of Harvard University, Senator McCain, we're honored to have you in our company today. I'd now like to introduce Professor David Gergen, professor of public policy here at the Kennedy School of Government, who will formally introduce Senator McCain.
You all should know that Maddy Germer just came to this community a few months ago. She is in her first year at the college, from Omaha, Nebraska. Senator Allen Simpson could not be here today, so I was asked if I might make a formal introduction. But first, let me, on behalf of the Harvard community, the faculty, the students, and residents of Cambridge, join in welcoming Senator John McCain back to the Forum. This is his second appearance. And as all of you know, this is the premier arena here at the university for political discussion, debate. And so here, as the campaign warms up, we're particularly honored that Senator McCain could join us. I also want to say a word about the format. This is going to be very much a man-in-the-arena format. The senator will speak to you all, to all of us, for a few minutes, and then he will stay here to answer questions. Because he enjoys an exchange, he's agreed to stay here till about 2:40, 2:45, answering your questions, so we have a good time together. I was asked to say a few words about the senator's background, and he probably is going to think I go on too long. But I wanted to tell you a story. In 1902... 1902. A young man by the name of John Sidney McCain entered the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis as a midshipman, about the same age as many of you here. And the decades that followed with grit, courage, and many thought a crusty demeanor is in the genes. He rose through the ranks and became a four-star admiral in the Navy. He was a pioneer in naval aviation, and at the age of 60, he commanded Boles Halseys' carrier task force in the closing months of the Pacific. If you look at a photograph there from that day on the battleship Missouri in 1945, that historic surrender, you will see John Sidney McCain there on the front ranks. In 1927, another young man, John Sidney McCain Jr., entered the Naval Academy. And he too, after he left, rose through the ranks. He became a four-star admiral. The first time in the history of the United States of military service there had been a father-son combination to rise to the rank of full admiral. And if you look at the pictures of Vietnam, you will see Jack McCain there toward the border, standing with the troops, visiting there as commander-in-chief, U.S. Naval Forces, the Pacific. In 1954, and you know what's coming next, a third young man, John Sidney McCain III, entered the Naval Academy. Now, some would think that he carried a heavy burden from his family, but he was a blithe spirit. In fact, he was a first-class hell raiser. One of his teachers from Episcopal High said he had a youth of, quote, "constructive irreverence." One of his classmates at the academy put it more bluntly, he said, "If you went on liberty with John McCain, it was like being in a train wreck." But he made it through. He went on to become a pilot. He had three near brushes with death as a pilot. Twice his plane stalled out, and he crashed. He managed to survive. His biographer, Bob Timberg, has written that God, with whom he had a cordial but casual Did I want to lose him then? He had a plan for him. But the plan, the immediate plan, was not that pleasant. In 1967, as he was flying a bombing mission across Hanoi, a surface-to-air missile knocked his plane out of the sky. Upon ejection, he broke his right knee, and both of his arms were broken. He lost consciousness. He fell, he parachuted into a lake. When he came to, a hostile crowd had gathered. They spit upon him, they beat him up, they bayoneted his left ankle. No one knows quite how he survived. His captors knew they had the son of an important American admiral. They went to him several months into captivity and said, "We'd like to release you." They knew it would be a propaganda victory. He knew that his best chance of survival, indeed, maybe his only chance, was to get back to medical help in the States. But he also knew that to accept release would be to violate the code of honor that exists for all POWs. He refused. And just as surely as night follows day, brutality followed his refusal. In the days that followed, he was brutally beaten. They broke, re-broke his arm, they broke a rib. He remained kept in captivity for five and a half years, refusing to take their offer of release. Coming back, I think people appreciated the fact that he had not only endured, he had kept faith with his fathers. He had kept the faith, and indeed, he grew from the experience. He drew strength from that experience. His health prevented him from going on, and the military could never take a full command after that. But after 22 years of military service, in 1981, he retired. The next year, he moved to Tucson, won an upset victory to the House of Representatives, three times. I guess twice he was then elected to the House. After that, three times to the Senate. When he was running for the Senate, he told the people of Arizona that unlike many of his buddies who died in Vietnam, he felt lucky. He felt lucky to have a second chance to serve his country. I think you know the rest of the story. He's become not only a... He's not only carried the torch for the Republican Party in the Senate, but he's also been a maverick, challenging his party on issues like tobacco and campaign finance reform, something he and Senator Bradley joined in yesterday, as you may have seen. So as we greet him to here today, many of you may agree, some of you may not agree with his views, but I would ask you to think back upon this century, to slew McCain, all the way back to 1902, to Jack McCain, and now to our speaker today. Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome to the Forum Senator John McCain.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, David, for that very moving and very warm, and actually did not reveal some of the other chapters in my life that perhaps might not be as glowing. I thank you for that kind introduction. The book that this young man has on his knee here, which, by the way, I am not hyping, it's Random House, $24.95, available on Amazon.com. A few weeks ago, I was on Meet the Press, and Tim Russert quoted from a passage in that book concerning my relationship when I was in pilot training in Pensacola, who performed professionally under the name of Marie "The Flame" of Florida. And I would have left that episode out of the book if I had ever known that I was running for president of the United States. And so I've had a very full and very rich life, and I've been very privileged to have the opportunity to serve the country. As I've experienced some successes, also some significant failures, I'm very happy. The opportunity to be back here, bunks a very well-educated, thoughtful, and committed audience, with whom I've had the opportunity about a year ago to have exchanges with, and I'm looking forward to this one. First of all, again, about my book, I've never been on a book tour before. I have a 15-year-old daughter named Megan, and it's very hard to get any approval or appreciation from 14- and 15-year-old daughters. So as part of the book tour, I went on the Jay Leno Show a couple of months ago. And Mr. Leno came into the dressing room where I was getting my makeup on, which takes longer and longer, and I said, "Mr. Leno, thank you for having me on your program. For a few moments, I will have some admiration and respect from my daughter Megan, who is 14." He had his cellphone with him, and he dialed up our home in Phoenix, asked me for our phone. I said, "What's your phone number?" He dialed up. My daughter Megan came to the phone, and he said, "Hi, Megan, how you doing? This is Jay Leno." She said, "Oh, Dad, will you stop fooling around?" To this day, my daughter Megan believes that she was talking to me. So you can't win at all. I've had a great experience running for president of the United States, and a lot of time in the great state of New Hampshire. And by the way, if any of you want to come to New Hampshire, particularly beginning in January, and spend time with us, it's a great experience. This is a great part of America. It's a great part of the American political system. The folks in New Hampshire take their responsibilities very seriously. They come to the town hall meetings. They ask questions, and they make comments. They stop you on the street. This is a good thing about America. I had a guy the other day who came up to me and said, "I've come to five of your town hall meetings, Senator McCain." I said, "My God, that's ample evidence of my inability to close the deal." But they do come, and they ask questions, and they make comments. And first of all, I'd like to mention, I do seek your sympathy, because I come from the great state of Arizona. Barry Goldwater from Arizona ran for president of the United States. Morris Udall from Arizona ran for president of the United States. Bruce Babbitt from Arizona ran for president of the United States. Arizona may be the only state in America where mothers don't tell their children that someday they can grow up and be president of the United States. So I've been trying to change that. One of my dearest friends in all the world was a guy named Morris Udall, who ran in 1976. One of the dearest friends that I ever had. Morris Udall was one of the funniest men ever in American politics. In fact, if you ever see a little book he wrote, Too Funny to be President, is a wonderful book. One of his sayings was, which I think is true, "The only cure to presidential ambition, the disease of presidential ambition, is embalming fluid." And I think that that probably might be true. His other famous joke was when he was running in 1976, and he walked into a barber shop in Manchester, New Hampshire, and he said, "Hi, I'm Morris Udall from Arizona, and I'm running for president of the United States." The barber said, "Yeah, we're just laughing about that this morning." It's a great ride. It's a great ride. And the reason why it's a great ride is because if you're going to enter into something like this, you've got to understand that you're fortunate to be able to start with. And second of all, you can't be afraid of losing. You cannot be afraid of losing. All of us who have observed political candidates in the past know that if you're afraid of losing sooner or later, then you're going to do something that you'll regret, or something that does not reflect your true positions and views and aspirations for the people of the country. I'm very proud to have made the success that we've made. As you may have noticed in the last week or so, there have been polls that show me actually ahead of Governor Bush in the state of New Hampshire. That same poll, by the way, five months ago, showed me at a 3% approval, and the poll had a 5% margin of error, which means we could possibly be at minus 2. So we've certainly made progress. And the thing I've learned about New Hampshire is they don't like long speeches, and I don't think they like long speeches here. And that's why I'm going to tell you why I'm running for president of the United States, and I'm going to talk a little bit about campaign finance reform with you, which was the subject of a lecture that I held here about a year ago. And they're not disconnected, by the way. They are not disconnected. I'm running for president of the United States because I want to reform the government. I want to reform education, so that every parent in America can have the same privilege that wealthy parents do, and that is to send their child to school of their choice. I want to reform the military. I think we've got to restructure the military to meet the post-Cold War challenges. We've got to take care of a situation where 12,000 brave, young enlisted people are on food stamps. That's wrong. I'm running because I think we need to reform the tax code. The tax code is 44,000 pages long. It's a cornucopia of good deals for the special interests that get another good deal put in every time we pass a tax bill. It's a nightmare for average citizens who want to pay their taxes and not live in fear of an audit for years. I want to reform institutions of government. I know that you know that we are experiencing the greatest change in the history of the world. Politicians are given to hyperbole. I admit it, okay? But what's happening right now is only comparable to the Industrial Revolution or the invention of the printing press. I'm not sure which it is. But I know that we have the greatest opportunity in the history of this world to provide knowledge and information and power to not only the people of America, but to all over the world. No oppressive or repressive nation can survive, can survive when their citizens have access to knowledge and information. This is the greatest opportunity to achieve Mr. Jefferson's assertion that all men and women are created equal, because we're going to wire every school and library in America to the Internet. And for the first time, the kids up on the Navajo reservation at least are going to have the information in their schools. Now, they need computers, they need teachers, and they need schools that are not condemned. They need a lot of things, but at least we're going to have this opportunity. I want to reform government to get in tune with that. And I really know that you can't do all that unless we get the government out of the hands of the special interests and back to the people of this country. Now, my friends, I worked there. I know what this big money does to the political process. I know it gridlocks us to the point where we can't carry out the people's interests. Example, example, HMO bill of rights, okay? 10 people in this room and I could work out an HMO bill of rights for the patients in the next 15 minutes. Why is it that we can't do that in Washington? I'll tell you why. Because the Democrats are gripped by the trial lawyers, who want everybody to be able to sue anybody under any circumstances, including class action suits. The Republicans are gridlocked by the insurance company money and the HMO money. So who suffers? Millions of Americans that are members of HMOs that don't have a voice in Washington. Somebody in this audience is going to say, "Well, Senator McCain, isn't money free speech? How dare you try to restrict free speech?" My friends, if money is free speech, then the special interests in Washington are sitting in the front of the room with megaphones, and you're back there whispering. Let me just give you one example, and I'll move on. I'm sure that maybe you all, many of you have never heard of an individual by the name Roger Tamraz. Roger Tamraz is a very wealthy man. He wanted to visit with the President of the United States back in 1996 because he had an idea of building a pipeline across Central Asia. Mr. Tamraz asked if he could go to the White House to see the president. They did a little background check on him, found out he had a couple minor problems, like being wanted by Interpol, so they decided that he wouldn't go and visit with the President of the United States in the White House. So he called up the chairman of the Democratic National Committee, said, "I'd like to give $300,000 to reelect President Clinton." Guess what? He went to several receptions at the White House, several. And all the problem is, he never got a chance to talk to the president about his pipeline idea. Thompson Committee hearings. Joe Lieberman, Senator from Connecticut, one of the great fine members of the United States Senate, questioning Mr. Tamraz, who's the witness? Mr. Tamraz, aren't you disappointed? Aren't you disappointed? He gave $300,000, and you never got to talk to the President of the United States about your pipeline? Aren't you disappointed in what you got for your $300,000? Mr. Tamraz answered, "No, next time I'm giving $600,000." Now, my friends, that was a little bit funny, but it's awful sad, because Mr. Tamraz was right. Mr. Tamraz was right. And it's got to be stopped, and if it isn't stopped, then we're going to have a continuation of the problem we see in America, and that is, in the 1998 election, the 18- to 26-year-old vote was the lowest in history. That's fact. That's fact. There was a recent Pew Research poll that showed that 69% of the young Americans between age 18 and 35 said that they are disconnected from government, and the reason they gave is a special interest. Now, there's also somebody in this audience that's thinking, "Yeah, McCain's got a great idea, it's great crusade he's on, but nobody really cares." I reject that notion to start with, and I think I have ample evidences, the traction we've gained in this campaign, that that's not the case. But if it's not the case, then I would rather fail than lose, than abandon what I think is the critical issue for the future of this country, and that is giving the government back to the American people. Finally, I was asked about six months ago, for the first time and the last time, in a forum, it was the Commonwealth Club in San Francisco, the last question I was asked was, "Senator McCain, what do you want to have accomplished, accomplished as president of the United States?" Past tense. I thought about it. About six months ago, Russ Feingold and I were greatly honored. We were given the John F. Kennedy Profiles in Courage Award at the Kennedy Library. It was one of the great honors of my life, and it also gave me an opportunity to know a little better a young man who has now left us, who we still mourn his passing. I went through the Kennedy Library on that day, and I watched Jack Kennedy's speeches. I watched his speeches, first his inaugural speech, I watched his speech about the Peace Corps, I watched several of his speeches. I am a proud conservative Republican. I am a proud conservative Republican. But I believe that Jack Kennedy had an ability, which is what being president is all about. Ronald Reagan had it, Franklin Delano Roosevelt had it, Theodore Roosevelt had it, and I believe Abraham Lincoln had it as well. And that is the ability to inspire Americans to commit themselves to causes greater than their self-interest. If we can reform the government, then I can have the ability to inspire Americans to commit themselves to causes greater than their self-interest, and I can convince them, when they say to me, "There are no noble causes left in the world," that every place where there's a hungry child, there's a noble cause. Every place there's a senior citizen that can't afford prescription drugs, there's a noble cause. Every place where there's people killing themselves for ethnic or tribal reasons, there's a noble cause. And that's really what president of the United States is all about. Can I achieve this goal? I'm not sure. We're still the underdog. Every time I see the amount of money that Governor Bush has, I'm reminded of the words of Chairman Mao, who said, "It's always darkest before it's totally black." But I'm very... But I'm very pleased. But I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased with the progress that we're making, and I would end my remarks with one request. The important thing to me about this campaign and about what I've tried to do all my adult life is motivate people to be involved now in the political process. It doesn't matter to me if you're a Republican, or Democrat, or Libertarian, or Vegetarian. Somewhere in this room are future senators, and there may be a future president of the United States. Probably, by the way, a woman president of the United States. I say with some pride, the top five positions in the state of Arizona are held by women. I'm very proud of that. They call and inquire to my health every day. And Elizabeth... And Elizabeth Dole, and Elizabeth Dole especially, but Elizabeth Dole, Lamar Alexander, John Kasich, and Dan Quayle all left because they lost the battle of bucks, not the battle of ideas. The woman president of the United States will look back and say, "Thank you, Elizabeth Dole, because of the work that she did." So my urging to you is, be involved in the political process. We need good, young men and women to be involved. The only way that we can ensure the future of this great nation, which stands obviously on the threshold of a new millennium, is for you to be involved. And that way, we'll have a lot more confidence that the next century we are about to enter, like the one we're just leaving, can be called truly the American century. Thank you very much for having me, and thank you, I'm ready to answer the questions. I understand there are four microphones. I see two of them, and I don't see the other two yet. I think they're...
Senator, right here.
Right up here, okay, great. Then we'll go, start with you. Yes, ma'am.
Senator McCain, my name is Heather Woodruff, and I'm an undergraduate here at the college. I first want to thank you for coming to speak to us today. But I have a question that was actually discussed last night in a Harvard tradition, we were talking politics, yes, on a Thursday night. And someone mentioned that they thought that your campaign finance bill was because you're from Arizona, and that you would still be able to, while other candidates may be searching for money, you would have rich retirees to give you $1,000 contributions. And I'd like to know what your response would have been.
Frankly, they'd never contemplate that, because Arizona is still a relatively small My view is that under no circumstances should anyone from anywhere be subject to the six- and seven-figure donations, these huge amounts of money. We call them soft money. A lot of people, and not anyone here, but a lot of Americans don't know what soft money means. Soft money means the huge unlimited contributions. Most of those unlimited contributions come from two sources, labor unions and major corporations. Those are the major sources. Now, there are some individual donors, but the majority of it, when you see it, comes from corporations. And I'm very proud of my state. A lot of people come and move there. We have so little water, the trees chase the dogs, and California is always stealing what we got, but you know that, Dan, a bunch of thieves, the way they... So many of my constituents in the summer go over to San Diego. I have to go to San Diego and visit them over there, you know? But we're also glad to have all those people from all over the Midwest who are coming and wintering with us. But I hadn't thought of that connection, and I don't think it's true if you look at who the major contributors are. Thank you, and I'm glad you're talking politics on Thursday night. That's good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Senator. My name's Frank Mitcham. I'm a first-year graduate student at the Kennedy School. I want to first commend you for taking on the challenge of inspiring the youth of America. I think we here sometimes take that for granted, because this is what we chose to do, but I think that's a very noble cause. As far as the campaign finance reform bill, I wanted to hear your response to Governor Bush's contention the other night in the debate, and the common contention among Republicans that the bill is drawn by you and Senator Feingold would essentially allow unions to continue to contribute soft money. I wonder how that loophole could exist, because I would think it would be a major concern, and if it's true and if it's not, how they perceive it. and if it's true and if it's not, how they perceive it to exist.
First of all, it doesn't exist in this respect. If you ban soft money, you ban the massive contributions from, no matter where they come, including from labor unions. I mean, I looked at a list the other day. The major multimillion-dollar contributions to the Democrat Party come from labor unions. But the major multi-hundred-thousand-dollar contributions to the Republican Party come from major corporations. By the way, Philip Morris is the number-one contributor, the last one I saw, to the Republican Party, something that I'm not particularly proud of. But, so, it would have the same effect. The other aspect of this that's kind of interesting is that the quote "hard money," the hard money is the thousand-dollar limit contribution. The small donors, Republicans have an advantage. So you could argue from an objective standpoint, if you did away with the big contributions, the Republicans would have an advantage, because they have the small donor base all over America. And the third thing is, that's fascinating of late, is that if you look at the congressional races, as we all know, the Congress is up for grabs in this upcoming election, that the soft money, the massive contributions, are about equally divided between the Republicans and the Democrats. Well, if you got an advantage in small donors, then wouldn't you? The answer is, that they become addicted to it. It's a whole lot easier to raise money in a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, than it is a thousand, or five hundred, or fifty, or twenty-five. And what it's done, it's distorted the entire political process. When I first ran for House in 1982, there was no such thing as these massive contributions. So guess what I had to do? I had to go knock on people's doors. I had to go to people's living rooms. I had to go to barbecues. I had to do the things that really politics are all about, seriously, that politics should be all about: encountering your would-be constituents, and talking to them, and listening to them. Instead, what we've evolved into, as we all know, huge amounts of money, buy negative ads, attack your opponent, and let's see what happens. And so, I can only tell you that if I believed that campaign finance reform would harm my party, I certainly would not be involved in it. And finally, could I remind you of a historical fact? This so-called soft money, these uncontrolled contributions, really didn't come into American politics until the late 1980s. How in the world did Ronald Reagan win the presidency in reelection? I'll never understand that, because we didn't have all this soft money, these contributions. So, it's just, the argument does not hold water. It is the classic, in all due respect, status quo defense of the present system, which everybody knows is wrong. And I thank you for the question. Yes. Yes, sir.
Hi, Senator McCain, my name is Carolyn Glick. I'm a second-year Masters of Public Policy student here at the Kennedy School, concentrating in international security policy. I wanted, if you will, to ask you a question about foreign policy.
Thank you.
Well, I was, I was wondering, what would your position be on the stationing of U.S. troops in the Golan Heights and transferring foreign aid to Syria in the event that a peace treaty is signed between Israel, Syria, with U.S. guarantees?
I'm a little reluctant to talk specifically, because I don't think prematurely the United States of America should make a commitment until we are sure that there's a viable peace agreement. It's been the policy of every administration, Republican and Democrat, back to Harry Truman, that we would provide economic assistance and other assistance to make a process, a peace process move forward successfully. I obviously would support such a thing. I think the United States has particularly technical capabilities, technical military capabilities, that could monitor the situation between, on any border situation between the United States and Syria, and I would be more than happy to use that, to give the kind of confidence necessary to lead to a peaceful resolution of the issue. But I don't see any reluctance on the part of my citizens in Arizona or anywhere else in, where else in America that wouldn't be able, prepared to provide assistance in the form of financial and other assistance as necessary in order to make a peace settlement work and encourage both parties to get together. Let me just add one additional point to that, and I'll start making my answers a lot shorter. Remember, the real key to peace in the Middle East is freely-elected governments, rule of law, and democratic societies. Where we see terrorism, Hezbollah, Hamas, those organizations flourish and nurtured by governments is where you have dictatorships. I think our next effort should see that these countries in the Middle East move forward and make progress to free and open societies and democratically-elected governments, if you really want a permanent peace in the region. Yes?
My name is Felicity Spector, and I'm a mid-career student at the Kennedy School. Following your widely-publicized meeting last night, in terms of political priorities, who would you say you had most in common with? Senator Bill Bradley or Governor George Bush?
I think I have much more in common on our political agenda with Governor Bush, who, by the way, is a fine and decent man. You will never hear me say anything negative about any other candidate. Americans are tired of that kind of stuff, and I'm not going to do it. Governor Bush and I share a conservative Republican philosophy and principles. Senator Bradley and I do not share that view, those views. But Senator Bradley and I are not only friends, but more importantly, I respect his views, and I think he's a dedicated public servant, and I would be more than pleased to have the opportunity, and I say this seriously, to debate all over the country, the issues of the future of this country, with Senator Bradley, because I know that that debate would be conducted on a level that would be illuminating to the American people. I thank you. Yes, sir.
Senator McCain, thanks for coming out. My name is Ben Snowden, and I'm involved with the Vanishing Voter Project over at the Schornstein Center at the Kennedy School.
Do you share my concern about reduced voter turnout and participation on part of...
I do indeed share your concern very much, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Our project is actually engineered to study American citizen engagement with the presidential selection process and try to increase that. And as I'm sure you're aware, over the last thirty years, voter turnout, voter engagement across the spectrum of American society has been plummeting. Aside from campaign finance reform, aside from reducing the influence of special interests in Washington, what kind of suggestions would you have for increasing citizen engagement?
Thank you for the question. I think that this whole issue of inspiring young Americans will also inspire them to take part in the political process. If we can motivate young Americans to serve in the military, the Peace Corps, mental hospitals, national forests, whatever it is, and this is a great crusade of mine, that somehow we've got to try to develop ways to get people involved in causes greater than their self-interest, that will naturally then evolve to concern about their government and participation in it. The problem today, obviously, is one that, because they're not motivated to serve, then there's no reason for them to participate in the political process. I think participation in political process is directly related to one's intentions and devotion to one's nation, and I think there's a direct relation between the two. One additional small comment, and I promise to make sure, that, fascinating, the Internet is changing the face of American politics. It will be the determining factor, not in this election, but in the next election. We now have forty thousand people, we email, mccain2000.com, mccain2000.com, that we, that we email. I can, I can communicate instantly with people all over the country. That's one way we've been able to go around some of the established Republican organizations that are not exactly inclined to support me. So, you know, I didn't win Miss Congeniality this year in the Senate, but the Internet, we're about to hit, sometime in the next day or two, we're about to hit a million dollars in contributions over the Internet. It's going to change American politics. It's good. It's going to be healthy, and I think that we will, we will see people voting on the Internet very soon. Did you want to follow up that real quick?
If you'd like to find out more about what we're doing, you can go to vanishingvoter.org.
Vanishingvoter.org. I will go to it. I will go to it. Right after I go to amazon.com to see how my book is selling. Sir.
Yes, Senator McCain, first of all, I wanted to thank you for coming to Harvard, and thank you for speaking to issues of youth apathy and involvement in the political process. It means a lot to me. My name is Jason Brinton, and I'm a Russian Studies concentrator, a sophomore here at Harvard. And I wanted to ask you specifically, with recent developments in the Chechnya situation in the past two weeks, and specifically in the last two to three days, how the Russian government has reacted to some of the developments in that breakaway republic? And considering some of the economic hardships that Russia's going through, and considering the importance of our relationship with Russia at this time, what would you as the President of the United States do?
That's a very terrible situation. One reason why it's terrible and appalling to me is that Americans don't seem to care, and guess why? Because it's not on your television screens. There's hundreds of thousands of refugees, there's massacres taking place, there's the threat that the Russians have made of telling people, innocent civilians, unless they get out of Grozny, they're going to die, and there's no way for a lot of them to get out. It's a, this is really a terrible situation. But from, from the offenses that it presents to our Judeo-Christian principles, it's also got a lot of other implications. One, the reemergence of the Russian military as a very significant force in Russia. Two, the threat that it has to Georgia, one of the only little burgeoning democracies headed by one of the great, great heroes in the history of the world, Mr. Shevardi Nazi, the vast oil and gas reserves in Azerbaijan and the region, the threat to Aliyev, et cetera. There's a whole lot of implications associated with the events in Chechnya. And then you have to cast that all in the light of a decrepit President with a new election coming up in Russia, which obviously has profound implications for our relationship. I think we must tell the Russians that we can't, that this is not acceptable behavior. I do not, it's just not acceptable. And the second thing is that we ought to cut off IMF funding, and we ought to cut off export-import loans. I don't think we ought to cut off the program that dismantles nuclear weapons, the weapon systems, because that's in our interest as well. Our options are limited. We cannot intervene militarily, nor would I, even if we could, I'm not, I'm not sure that that would be the course of action. But this has really got consequences. The Russian Prime Minister's popularity has skyrocketed. It's changed the entire political equation. If the lesson that Russian politicians draw from Chechnya, that reassemble the old Soviet Union is the way to gain political ascendency, my friends, we've got some, some long-term implications. In the short term, Russia does not pose a military threat to us. In the long term, they still span eleven time zones, vast resources, since you're a student of it, I don't have, have to tell you. But this is a very serious situation, and if I were President of the United States, I would be talking about it every day. I would be talking about it every day, because I think that we need to exercise a much more persuasion on this issue. And by the way, our European allies, who are usually somewhat more cautious than we are, as you know, they are more forward in expressing their concern about this issue than we are. Thank you for the question. It's a very tough challenge. Up, up above, yes.
Hi, Senator McCain. My name is Michelle Boyers. I'm a student across the river at Harvard Business School. And my question is, yesterday, Vice President Gore released an education proposal, which involves creating an education fund to pay teachers in public schools higher salaries in return for higher standards. In addition to that, there were, his proposal also included universal preschool for all children in the States, so that they could enter kindergarten at the same, on the same playing field. I'm curious, two things. One, what's your reaction to his proposals? And two, what are your specific education proposals? Thanks.
I have not had time to examine the Vice President's proposal, but I'm always concerned about the creation of vast new programs and fundings in a hundred billion dollars or so, as I just first glance, I looked at that. But that does not change the fact that education is the major challenge that we face. There was a recent Department of Commerce study that showed that there is a growing gap in America between the haves and the have-nots. Not surprisingly, it's, it's divided up on ethnic lines. And it's clear that those that have the education, the training to take part in this information technology are going to do very well, those that don't, don't. That has profound, serious implications for America. So education and training are now the key issues. My philosophy is clear and obvious: choice and competition, choice and competition. We should try new experiments. We should try charter schools. They're wildly successful in my state. They may not be in Massachusetts, they are in Arizona. The best schools in Arizona now are charter schools. I wouldn't take any money from existing public education in order to try vouchers, but I'd do away with corporate welfare, including ethanol subsidies, which, by the way, in case you missed it, I announced my opposition to it in Iowa the other night. Warmly received, warmly received. Gas, gas and oil subsidies, and start an experimental test voucher program in the poorest school districts in America. And there's another key element of this, and that's teachers. The average salary of a lawyer in America is seventy-nine thousand dollars a year, the average salary of a teacher is thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's a disgrace. That's a disgrace. There's no reason why a good teacher should be paid less money than a bad senator. And I think that we have to, and so, we have to have merit, merit pay in testing for teachers. But also, I still am a confirmed believer that local and state people know the situation best and should be given the money and the decision-making process there. Look, in Nogales High School in Nogales, Arizona, about sixty percent of the kids come there speaking only Spanish. That's a big difference than the problems in, in South Boston, okay? There's still problems, but they're very different. And I don't think that a bureaucrat in Washington has the qualification to handle those. So I would give the money, the resources, and the decision-making power back to the states. And, but choice and competition, I think, has already been proven to be a way to address the education issues. Yes?
Good afternoon, Senator, my name is Megan Seibel.
By the way, if anyone here wants a follow-up, you know, I say something that insults your intelligence, please, please don't hesitate to follow up. Go ahead.
Thanks. My name is Megan Seibel, I'm a first year at the college. Your public statements have been mostly associated regarding research to cutting waste and pork. What is your level of commitment to federal support for research programs, particularly at universities?
First of all, I, yes, I have opposed waste and pork barrel spending. In fact, I've been known to even lose my temper when I see, when I see us spend six-point-four billion dollars on things like manure handling and disposal in Starkville, Mississippi, and a helicopter carrier we neither want nor need, and airplanes that we've said years ago we didn't want. And meanwhile, there's twelve thousand enlisted families, proud young men and women, on food stamps, as I referred too early. We need to fund research and development, particularly at the earliest stages, a lot more than we have today. In fact, we all know now that it was a research and development project that helped the Vice President invent the Internet. And, in fact, you know, I'm a little older, I invented television. So, so I think, I think it's important, I think it's important that, that we fund particularly pure research and development. I would like to see, and I say this right here at Harvard, I would like to see some of the other schools and universities get a shot at some of these monies as well. I would argue that sometimes the concentration of some of the money is not as well distributed as, as I would like to be, but that's a mechanical part of the issue than, than the concept itself. Some anti-Harvard people there, they're, yes, sir.
Senator McCain, let me first say that it's an honor to have you here. You mentioned in your introductory remarks the HMO bill of rights, and a few days ago you spoke about healthcare. Obviously, healthcare is a big issue, but I wondered if you could just state your sort of, your central concern about healthcare in America and what you would like to do about it.
My central concern, remember, that there are, the reason why healthcare is so difficult is so many facets. Seniors that can't afford a prescription drug, eleven million children uninsured, forty-four million uninsured, the HMO problem, the Medicare system going broke. My biggest, the biggest challenge we face is a clear and obvious one. We've got a generation of baby boomers that are aging. So the, so the strain on, on the healthcare system is going to be enormous. We all know that long-term care and geriatric care are the most expensive kind of care there is. That's our great challenge, is how are we going to handle this problem? But I would like to mention one other problem that bothers me emotionally, okay? And it really bothers me emotionally. A wonderful thing is happening in America, my dear friends, a wonderful thing is happening. Thanks to Tom Brokaw's book, The Greatest Generation, thanks to the movie Saving Private Ryan, which I hope every young American at the appropriate age could see, we are appreciating or re-appreciating the World War II veterans. Their service and sacrifice did make the world safe for democracy. It changed the lives of all of us, and they're leaving us at the rate of thirty thousand a month. Now, we're appreciating them enormously, but we're not taking care of them. They're not getting the long-term and geriatric care we promised them when we asked them to serve and sacrifice. A wonderful thing happens at these book signings. World War II veterans especially, but other veterans, but especially World War II veterans come when I'm signing books. They bring me pictures of themselves in their units back in 1944 at the Solomon Islands, in 1944 at, at the Battle of the Bulge. It's very touching. Some of them stand and cry. It's really remarkable. And I am deeply outraged and offended, as we should be, that... And I am deeply outraged and offended, as we should be, that we're not taking care of these veterans. So if I had to give you a priority, I would tell you it would probably be to take care of that generation and other veterans first. I thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Senator McCain. My name is Owen Robinson. I'm actually a sophomore undergraduate here, and I am a Democrat, but I still think you're a pretty good guy.
Thank you. I know, some of your best friends, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm actually from Syracuse, New York, and one of the biggest issues that's going on right now is the issue of Indian land claims. And for people in the audience who don't know what that is, basically what that is, there are certain Indian nations around where I live that are buying up land around their reservations, and when they can't buy it, sometimes they're suing the people who own the land to get that land. And then what they do is they try to expand the reservation of that land and assert their sovereignty over it. And recently, especially in these last few weeks, that's degenerating into things like arson, and some very serious death threats, threats to bomb the casino, things like that. And so I was wondering, first of all, where you stand in terms of the rights of Native Americans to the rights of the people that live around them? And also, if you were President, what you would try to do to try and reduce some of the hostility that those groups feel toward one another?
Thank you for the question, and you and I will be in disagreement on my answer. One of the great honors of my life is to have been supported by every Indian tribe, all 25 of them, in my home state of Arizona. I think the blackest chapters in our history have been written in our treatment of Native Americans. I can still take you to Window Rock, Arizona, where there are elderly Indians living in holes in the ground. I can take you to schools that have been condemned for years. It's really a remarkable tragedy, and the late Judge, Justice Cohen, said it's the miner's canary, how our treatment of Native Americans as to how we are as a nation. Now, I understand that there are problems such as the one that you described. And a lot of it has to do now that, for the first time in their history, some Indian tribes are getting rich because they are engaging in Indian gaming. Foxwoods Casino is the biggest casino now, I think, in the world or America, or something like that. And I understand some of that resentment. I don't like gambling, and I don't think it's very healthy, although I do not advocate abolishing it or anything else. That's a decision that Americans and states and others make. But I believe that most of these issues can be settled through negotiation and consultation. We've never had a major crisis in my state with Native Americans, at least one that we couldn't resolve through sitting down and consultation and negotiation. Some of those claims that the Indians have are legitimate to neighboring land. I can show you treaty after treaty after treaty where we just backed off and backed off and backed off it, as more and more people came in. Geronimo was promised that he could go back to the Chiricahua's. They took him to Florida instead. So I believe that we can, by focusing a lot of attention on Native Americans and making it a high priority, remembering what our obligations are as a Judeo-Christian nation, that we can resolve a lot of these problems. Finally, let me just, you probably know an anecdote that happened recently. A federal judge in Washington held the Treasury Department and the Department of Interior in contempt because they can't find $2.5 billion worth of revenues that belong to the Native Americans. Tell me one other group of Americans that that would be done to, that there wouldn't be the outrage. $2.5 billion, they can't even find it. That's the treatment, I'm sorry if I get a little angry. But so, so I would like to work, I would like to, with you and others who are involved and care about these issues, we can resolve these issues and still honor our commitments to our first citizens. I thank you.
I just wanna say I'm on your side on that one. I don't disagree with you, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I thought by the nature of your question that you might have been. I apologize. Yes, yes.
Lucien Prier, I'm a mid-career student here at the Kennedy School, and I'm coming from France, and that's where my question is coming from. You've been quoted a number of times recently, in the past few years, on various comments on France, and I would like you to take some time and explain to us what your problems are with France, and if you can.
My first, my first problem is that Paris is too expensive. That's my first problem. I have felt from time to time that the French government has not been as cooperative with us as we should in certain challenges that we have had in Europe. And I was particularly, I was unhappy when Warren Christopher was not treated very well at a luncheon when he was about to retire. That upset me to some degree. And I wrote a letter that I gave to the French ambassador that I would have liked to have delivered to the French government, because Warren Christopher was about to retire, and he was snubbed at a luncheon by the French, I believe, Foreign Minister. I got a letter back from the French ambassador that said, "Of course I will not send your letter to the French government." You know, "Thanks, pal." You know, I mean, so, look, I don't, I don't mean to be considered anti-French. I do believe that the French sometimes have not been as cooperative as we had hoped to be. I also hope that I give them credit for the tremendous cooperation that we, and working together during Operation Desert Storm, and tremendous contribution the French made at that time. I think there's always gonna be frictions between the United States and our European allies, but I also believe that the Atlantic Alliance, of which the French played an integral and vital role, was a key and determining factor in winning the Cold War. And if I've made remarks that are critical of the French from time to time, I hope they would consider also that I will continue to praise them when I think that that's necessary as well. And obviously, I, like all Americans, appreciate and admire the enormous culture and beauties of that beautiful country, where I did spend part of my misspent youth when I was on a carrier in the Sixth Fleet. So I thank you for your comment. Yes?
Hello, Senator. My name is Alum Hadavia, and I'm a freshman this year at the college. And as you mentioned in your speech, many of today's youth feel disillusioned about politics. And do you feel that combating special interests will be enough to change this? And if no, what else would you do as President?
I think combating the special interests and giving the government back to the American people is the first and vital step. But then, I think, obviously, we have to reform the tax code, we have to reform education, as we talked about earlier, we have to reform the military, so we can meet the challenges of the post-Cold War era. We have to reform so many parts of government, and particularly, to get it in tune, as I mentioned earlier, with this technological revolution. Look, we all know that Intel makes a chip, loses money for six months, 12 months, makes money for six months, and comes up with a new chip. I just wrote the letter to the FCC, a guy wanted to buy a television station, and it's been two years, and they won't give him a decision. I mean, there's a total lack of synchronization between the government and this rapid pace of technological change that we're experiencing. This government is geared to the industrial revolution. And that whole environment has to change and change dramatically, because we know that next year, beginning next year, the largest single segment of our economy will be this technology. So what I view campaign finance reform as a gateway, because first, you gotta give government back to the people. And I, anyway, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Senator McCain. My name is Shannon May, and I'm a senior here in the college, and I'm also from your home state of Arizona.
Bless you.
And you've spoken very eloquently during today's discussion about your concerns in the military, and specifically, how other problems in our society are then reflected within our military forces, such as health care or poverty. I've been concerned, and it was something you mentioned earlier, about how our military is gonna act as we restructure for a post-Cold War era military. Now, in the past few months, there have been several, actually, over the past year, there have been three to four service people who have been dismissed daily, with clean service records, exemplary records, simply because they were gay or lesbian. And this is going on at the same time that all of the forces across the military are way beneath their military recruitment levels they need to be sustainable. And I'd like to ask you where you would stand, for example, say, in my brother's case, where he is being both under review for promotion to captain, at the same time for dismissal, you know, our good friend, Representative Steve May from Arizona. And where would you stand? Would you seek for his dismissal or repeal the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy?
Steve May is a fine representative and a good friend and a very wonderful person, and I'm proud to call him a friend. I intend to meet with him next week or week after and discuss this, his particular situation. He believes that he has been unfairly treated. I believe that as his senator, I should communicate with him and determine whether indeed that is the case. I support the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy because, because General Colin Powell, General Norman Schwarzkopf, all of the military leaders that I respect and admire, came up with this policy, and they thought it was the best way to address a very difficult problem within our military. Now, why is the military different? The military is different because it's the only institution in our democracy that we ask the people to go out and fight and die, and risk their lives. It's the only institution. No other institution in America do we ask them to take up that particular role. So there are unique aspects of military service, and when someone like General Colin Powell, who, by the way, would be the next Secretary of State in a McCain administration, say, say that this is the best policy and the best way to address this issue, I have to respect that. And the reason why you have to respect the military leadership on that, because it's the military leaders that are in charge of these people when they go into combat. It is a very unique situation. Now, I would be glad periodically to review this policy. I've talked to Bill Cohen, Secretary Bill Cohen, who's an outstanding Secretary of Defense about this issue. He is keeping in contact with it, and he is voting a lot of time and effort, and there have been abuses, there have been abuses of it. That is a reason to absolutely stop those abuses, and I will do everything in my power to see that they are. And I know that this is a very, very difficult issue for Steve, and a man that I, again, admire and respect. I thank you.
So, related question. I'm a sophomore here at Harvard, I'm also a second-year cadet in Army ROTC. My question is geared towards the low recruitment levels that we're facing right now, and what your, you know, your ideas and proposals are for re-engaging the American youth to service in the military. You know, Harvard, we faced, you know, some internal debate, and don't have, you know, among the highest levels of participation, but you go down to a place like Texas A&amp;M, the Corps of Cadets, and you have thousands of people. Being in ROTC is a very honorable thing for them, very well-respected, and how you see that for America's future and our battle readiness?
Part of it has to do with motivating young people to serve the country, as we've discussed. Second thing is, obviously, you've gotta pay them more. There was a recent piece on NBC that showed the military and their jobs in the military, and their civilian counterparts, and the pay of both. Military about half the pay of their civilian counterparts. Obviously, you can't have that situation attract and retain good young people. Our pilots are getting out of the military faster than we can train them. Let me tell you an example of the problems in the military, and that's the conflict in Kosovo. In Kosovo, General Clark asked on emergency request for 24 Apache helicopters to go to Albania from Germany. It took 10 days for the military to process that request. Once it was processed, it took them two months to get 24 helicopters from Germany to Albania. They trained, crashed two, and never used them in the conflict. I mean, we've got very serious problems. That's not motivating young people. I guess the second thing is, we've got to cut down on their deployments. Too many young people are too long away from their homes and families, and we've got to change that scenario. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Sir, sir, I'd be proud to serve under you as my Commander in Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. As an old Navy man, that's doubly impressive to me. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Senator McCain. My name is Lionel de Grange from Haiti. Five former U.S. presidents, President Nixon, President Reagan, President Bush, President Ford, and President Carter, said that it wasn't a wise policy to bring Aristide back to Haiti. Three former Secretary of State, Secretary Henry Kissinger, Secretary Eagleberger, and Secretary James Baker, said the same thing. Former Admiral Brice Skocov wrote an editorial in the New York Times, saying, "Ask Aristide to kick out the military and organize new elections." They didn't follow this path. They brought Aristide back at the cost of $3 billion, and they sent 20,000 U.S. soldiers to do these jobs. Everybody now agreed to be polite that it isn't a success. You are the President of IRI. Recently, they kicked out the representative of IRI in Haiti, Stan Le Luca. If you have to advise the President what line of action to follow about this situation, why could you say, Senator McCain?
First of all, I wouldn't have sent 20,000 American troops and spent $2 or $3 billion in the enterprise. Arguably, by the view of any objective observer, Haiti is worse off for the experience than they were before they were there. There are some problems in the world that remain with us for a long, long period of time. Cyprus springs to mind, the Middle East problem, Haiti is another one of them. All we can do is make every effort through moral suasion, through organizations such as the International Republican Institute, the National Endowment for Democracy, and others, and through the humanitarian efforts of many, many private organizations and NGOs to try and help the plight of the poorest people in our hemisphere who suffer untold indignities and outrages. But to send American troops there, as we tried once before in this century, has not been an effective method of doing it. I would recognize this is a long-term project. I would recognize that any humanitarian, charitable, any other efforts that we can make to help the people of Haiti, I would strongly support. But military intervention has proven twice already in this century as not a profitable enterprise. And by the way, General Skocov was a general, not an admiral. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I wish you had been an admiral. Go ahead.
My name is Tracy Parmenter. I'm a student here at the Kennedy School, and my question is regarding the wage gap in this country, which is growing every year. People are working harder and falling further behind. It's something that's on your agenda, and specifically, how would you deal with that?
I mentioned earlier this recent Department of Commerce study that showed a growing gap between the haves and the have-nots. It really does come back to a large degree, not solely, but a large degree to this business of training and education. It is incumbent upon us to put as our highest priority that every young American receives the same quality of education in America so they can take part in this prosperity. Now, there's other, I think there's other areas, although I think that we found that stock options is a good thing. Every employee of Cisco today that's been there since 1990 is now a millionaire, which I think is a very good thing. Wish I'd have gone to work there myself, but the fact is that training and education are the critical items, and these corporations that have come from nowhere and are now multi-billion dollar corporations, they should play a very key and active role in this effort as well. They can provide a whole lot of expertise, equipment, and partnerships to help this issue along. Now, there's other areas that we can talk about, Head Start programs, WIC programs, others, so that we can get young children up onto the level playing field, early childhood development, and all that, that are also factors. But I would argue that the overwhelming factor is training and education. Yes, sir?
Welcome to Massachusetts, Senator.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Just to revisit the military readiness point of view for a moment. Recruitment levels, as you pointed out, are 20% off, and I think part of that is reflected in the veteran's point of view, that the government is not meeting their needs and entitlement. And I think that contributes largely to that 20% shortfall of recruiting goals. Do you have any vision of reforming the Department of Veterans Affairs in your government reform to bring entitlement back into the veteran?
The only way we're gonna get the veterans the health care that we promised them is through a restructuring of the VA system. Now, that's been tried a couple of times before, but it has not been tried in conjunction and cooperation and work with the veteran service organizations. You've gotta get the VFW, the American Legion, the DAV, the Paralyzed American Veterans, and the other veterans organization in on the takeoff. I don't know why I mentioned New Hampshire so much, but if you're a veteran in Bangor, Maine, and you want to get an MRI, you gotta drive to Boston. Now, that's not right. That's not right. You should be able to go get an MRI right there in Boston. We've gotta restructure the VA. That does not mean doing away with all the VA hospitals, because there are unique capabilities in the VA health care system. But obviously, it has to be restructured, otherwise, we're never gonna succeed in providing them with those benefits. By the way, those of you that read Primary Colors, Joe Klein is here with us today. If you have any questions about the liberal media bias and communism that exists, you might wanna ask him afterwards about that. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Senator. My name's David Montes. I'm a first year here at the college. Back in 1992, your Senate colleague, Harris Wolford, argued that if a criminal has a right to an attorney, then every American has a right to a doctor. Do you think it's a responsibility of the U.S. government to guarantee that every single American, especially millions of working-class Americans...
Why is building a missile defense system worth risking an end to cooperation with Russia in areas of warhead reduction and securing nuclear materials?
First of all, I believe we could convince the Russians that it is in their interest to be able to combat terrorism in rogue states with a missile defense system, and that technology I would be glad to share with them, or at least some of it. Their rationale for their massacres in Chechnya right now is because Chechnya harbors terrorists, Islamic fundamentalists, et cetera. I also believe that one of the four major threats to our security in the future is the proliferation of weapons of mass destruction and the means to deliver them. And I believe that we need a missile defense system, but I have not given up on the possibility of convincing the Russians that it's in their interest too. I don't believe we will convince the Chinese. But I do believe that one of the ways that we could defuse the threats to Taiwan is if we had a seaborne missile defense system that we could put in international waters would be a great deterrent at some point. I think we really have to be concerned about a rogue state acquiring the missile and the weapon, and a lot of rogue states have made progress in that direction in recent years. Yes?
Senator McCain, I'd first just like to thank you for coming to Harvard. You have certainly inspired many of us, including myself today, and we appreciate your presence here. One of the hallmarks of your campaign has been campaign finance reform, and one of your key proposals is banning soft money. I'd like to get your impression of what we should do on hard money. As you know, the $1,000 limit that was established was established in the 1970s and hasn't been adjusted for inflation, and if inflation were taken into account, it would be about three times what it is today. After you ban soft money, what do you intend on doing on the $1,000 limit?
As part of overall reform, I would be glad to lift the limit to what $1,000 was in 1974, which is about $3,000. That could be a part of the package. And by the way, I don't see anything wrong with free television time, particularly since the networks acquired, keep the cameras rolling there, since the network, the broadcasters acquired $70 billion worth of free spectrum that were owned by the taxpayers. So I think that free television time would be something that would be very helpful to the country. Television lovers all over, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Senator McCain, my name is Rich Cooper, and I'm a junior at the college. My question is this. George Bush has criticized your campaign finance plan as one that will unilaterally disarm the Republican Party. I'm wondering, how can you make the case to Republican voters who have this perception to vote for you in a primary, when they know that it will put you at a competitive disadvantage against a Democrat who will run against you?
I would love to be the nominee of this party and be in a debate with a Democrat who has said they're gonna continue to take this so-called uncontrolled money. I'd love to talk about the president treating the Lincoln Bedroom like Motel 6, and he was the bellhop. I'd love, I'd love to talk about how the Vice President of the United States asked monks and nuns to renounce their vows of poverty and pay thousands of dollars so that they could spiritually commune with him. By the way, he said he didn't know where he was. You know, perhaps the odor of incense and those folks in saffron robes might have given him a clue, but I would love, I would love, I would love to talk about the abuses that took place in the 1995-96 campaign, including all this Chinese and Indonesian money that came in. And if they're doing the same thing, it would be a great pleasure for me. But I also think, in all candor, honestly, it would be a terrible thing for America if we saw a repeat of what happened in the last election cycle. It was terrible. And by the way, Republicans did a lot of things as well. This system makes good people do bad things, and that's really the problem with it today. David's getting mad at me. One more question.
Hi, my name's Helen Springout. I'm a first year here at the college. My question, in light of the rumors of George W.'s former past drug use and Clinton's impropriety as in office and before office, do you think the President of the United States should be a moral leader as well as a political leader?
Yes, but I also think that we ought to understand that there is an area of privacy that people are entitled to. I have said when asked that I believe that Governor Bush deserves privacy. And look, again, this, part of this gets back to motivating people to serve and to run for public office. I'm one of the most flawed people you will ever encounter in American public life, and I think that it's important that we allow them some privacy. Where that line is, I leave it up to people like David Gergen and Joe Klein and the others of this world to make that decision, but there's got to be some area for that. That's really my view on this. I wanna thank all of you. I wanna thank you very much. And if you'll leave just one impression from this old geezer, he asked me to be involved in the political process, not only for my future, but the future of my children and the next generation of Americans. I'm worried, I'm concerned about it. I hope you'll be involved, and I hope you'll invite me back. And come on over to New Hampshire. We have a great time. You're welcome on the bus, and the weather's getting real nice now. You'll really like it. And please, and please remember the words of the late Mayor Daley of Chicago, who said, "Vote early and vote often." Thank you very much. Senator McCain, thank you.